Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 6, 2009 meeting of the Glendale City Council being called order at 6:07 PM. We have a roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian. Mayor Quintero. Mayor Protam Weaver.
Here. Life's Salute tonight will be led by Councilmember John Drayman and the invocation by City Clerk Dottie Kosaki. Please stand.
Please rise, place your right hand over your heart, repeat after me, and they've moved the flag. I beg your pardon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. This evening we pray for the continued health and vitality of our city. Let us give thanks for the citizens who give generously of their time and resources to make our neighborhoods beautiful and our city prosper. We are aware and grateful of our many blessings and pray for those who recently suffered from earthquakes and storms in the Far East and South Pacific. Let us reflect on all that we have been given as citizens and residents of this bountiful, prosperous land and actively seek ways to give back and help those less fortunate. May your council and community be guided by these principles during tonight's meeting and after. Amen.
What is next, please?
Next is the report of the clerk, and the report is that the agenda for the October 6, 2009 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, October 1, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next.
Presentation and appointments at 3:00 a.m. Agenda preview for the meetings of October 13, 2009.
As I am. Well, would you prefer I use your married name?
Sure.
I'll forget it.
Mullins.
Mullins. Mullins. I'm sorry.
We call our hay.
Zed Payad.
That as well.
Payad slash Mullins.
I answer to anything, Mr. Starber.
Zed Mullins will do the agenda preview.
Thank you. There's no housing items on next week's agenda for redevelopment. We have a Director of Development Services proposed development for the legendary tower Glendale to be located at 300 North Central Avenue. We have a public hearing. Director of Development Services requests for variance to allow a third ground sign and installation of non-accessory sign on subject. Third ground sign for property located at 701 North Fran. For the council meeting, we have two items. The City Attorney regarding denial and finding of appeal of zoning use certificate number PZUC 2006-0234 located at 2831 through 2833 Honolulu Avenue. And the second item is City Attorney regarding officers of city and creation of community planning department. And that concludes the agenda for next week.
Thank you. And what is next, please?
At 3:00 B is proclamation designating October 2009 as Cultural Diversity Month.
Thank you, and I assume we have some members here. Mr. Drayman, chairing the committee, will present it.
May I please ask the members of the Unity Fest Committee to step forward? Some of the members. I know we have a lot of other members that cannot make it tonight, but they're here to accept the proclamation on behalf of the committee.
I will read Mayor Quintero's proclamation.
Thank you.
Whereas the city of Glendale recognizes and values the ethnic and cultural heritage of all community members, and whereas our city's diversity strengthens our community and presents us with opportunities for continuing economic growth and cultural enrichments while making Glendale a more interesting and better place to live and work, and whereas Cultural Diversity Month provides an occasion to focus on ways in which we can learn from each other and come to common understanding of ourselves as a multicultural community with shared goals and values, and whereas the city celebrates its multi-ethnic and multicultural makeup through planned activities such as the annual city employee potluck, world adventure lunches, and the Unity Fest 2009 sponsored by the city employees Human Relations Committee, the city of Glendale, and community volunteers, now therefore Frank Quintero, Mayor of the city of Glendale, does hereby proclaim October 2009 as Cultural Diversity Month, and thanks all residents for joining us in celebrating Glendale's cultural diversity and enjoying all community activities. Mr. Drayman.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Weaver, and thank you to Mayor Quintero for signing the proclamation. Who am I presenting this to, by the way? Who's going to receive it?
Pardon?
A decisive committee we have. I'll tell you, I will hold it out here and just see who takes it from me. There we are. Congratulations, and I would also like to take the moment to remind everybody that Unity Fest is this Sunday from noon till 6:00 PM on Bran Boulevard for the second year in a row between Lexington and California. It was very highly attended last year, almost 16,000 people turned out. We're hoping to grow on that. I will leave it to Zed to tell you about some of the details of the event, but I encourage you all to come, and I'd also like to ask part of the group to step forward and make a few comments. It's my pleasure to chair the group this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Quintero. Sorry, Drayman. Efren, would you like to step to the podium? Mayor Quintero, Councilmember.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Mayor Protam Weaver. Just wanted to say there's been a lot of planning going into this program. It's going to be a great program. You guys have always been very supportive of my sister city, Rosarito, so they are sending a group from Rosarito to perform on that particular day in support of our city here at Glendale. And so I want to invite all the public to come out. It's going to be a great time. I hear a lot of you are going to be there, and so please come out and have a good time.
Carla.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Mayor Protam. My name is Carla Delgado, and I'm representing Holy Family High School in Glendale, and this is our first year being a part of it, so we're very excited. We're going to participate in two performances, so we're very much excited about it. Thank you.
Ross.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Mayor Protam Weaver. Ross Ferris, I'm with the city of Glendale at the Civic Auditorium. I'm involved with most of the city events, and this particular event is very special because it does involve the entire community, and it really does show what the city of Glendale is all about. We're about unity, we're about diversity, we're about treating people fairly, and I encourage everyone to come out and see this in action. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like just to quickly thank our sponsors because without them we will not be able to put this event together. First of all, I'd like to thank the Korean Glendale Sister City Association, the Glendale Gapon Sister City Association, Glendale Management Association, Glendale Credit Union, and LA Credit Union, along with the Montrose Shopping Park Association, Glendale News Press, Muses Weekly, Orgak Newspaper, Espress Newspaper, Horizon TV, and Glendale Parks Recreation, along with our Public Works Department. They all have been extremely generous in their contribution, whether it was in kind or by donation, making a sponsorship to the event and which would enable us to put on a wonderful event. Really quickly, I just want people to come out, bring a wallet full of money, and they'll be enjoying a lot of our vendors, having lunch, entertainment, arts and craft, and lots of talent that we will be offering that day. So we look forward to seeing everybody.
Anybody tell me if you park in our local garages, is it a freebie that day or do we still charge the going rates?
For Unity Fest, we'll be free to the public on that day as Public Works Department sponsor of the city event. Yes, you'll be free of charge.
Public, get to the parking garages, the Maryland Garage, the Orange Street, get to those garages, the park, instead of trying to find places on the residential streets.
Plenty of parking, and the address is 222 North Orange Street. And as Councilmember Drayman indicated, the event is from noon till 6:00, and we'll have entertainment going from noon to 6:00, and probably a lot of fun stuff. The farmer's market, and a lot of vendors will be there, too.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
What is next, please?
Next is a 3C presentation by the Glendale Relay for Life Committee.
And who's here? One. Two.
I believe we have a video, a short video to show. We'll go ahead and get that started. Thanks for joining us.
I'll just take a second.
Okay. Thanks.
Apparently the audio is off, so we have to give a narration. You guys are on.
We can go ahead and talk through, share things. Hello, Protam, Mayor Weaver, and Councilmembers. Thank you so much for letting us be here. We have a video showing here. We'll just kind of walk people through. It really celebrates the cancer survivors in our community and provides everyone an opportunity to get together and celebrate our successes against cancer with survivors. We're able to remember those who have lost their battle against cancer. We are able to celebrate. You can see here with many local bands. We really appreciate all of them coming forward and giving of their time. We also take time to fight back against cancer, kind of help encourage the community to know that they can be empowered to fight back against this horrible disease. There's been so many successes recently against cancer. There was just a report that came out that breast cancer has gone down, I believe, for the last 10 years, 2% in mortality for the last 10 years, which is just amazing every year. We have a few people from our committee here. I'll let Margaret introduce herself.
I am Margaret Agus. I am a co-chair for the event, as well as Maria Abrams here, so.
I'm Wanda Wheeler, and I am the online chairman for the Relay for Life Glendale.
Our event is fast approaching, a week after Unity Fest. We've got it up at Shoal Canyon. It's a 24-hour event that just really changes people's lives and changes people's outlook on cancer. The event starts at Saturday, October 17, at 10:00 AM, and continues for 24 hours through 10:00 AM on October 18. It'll be at Shoal Canyon Ball Field, and this year we have an amazing opportunity to help fight back the cancer really for the next 30, 40, 50 years. A great study is going to be here. It's an epidemiologic study. It's called CPS3, and it's a great way for people, maybe they don't have the funds to fight back, to help support the Cancer Society through donations, but they can be a part of CPS3, which helps the Cancer Society track different -- helps them track different age groups, what may cause cancer, or what may keep people from getting cancer. So it's a great opportunity for people to be a part of that. We have a small little gift here for everybody.
In appreciation of our committee and Glendale Relay for Life, we have a small gift for your continued support. Without our event, without the city's obvious commitment and support, this wouldn't have happened for us. So again, we invite all of our community members to come out, starting at 10:00 AM on October 17, and it goes all the way to 10:00 AM on October 18. And the reason why is because cancer never sleeps, and so there's going to be teams of people gathered together throughout the day camping out and enjoying the fun. We have a great entertainment schedule that's been planned throughout the day, some local bands, and some of our high school groups are actually participating. Hoover High Prep Team, as well as a band from Hoover High, and also the Glendale Drill Team will be performing at our event. So we look forward to our community members -- sorry about that -- to come out and join us. And again, it's never too late to join or start a team. So if you want to get some more information, please visit our website, which is www.relayforlife.org/GlendaleCA.
Thank you.
So do I give this?
We got phones last week, and this week something else. It is amazing how the Unity Fest and Relay for Life have grown over the years. It's a marvelous thing for the community.
Yes, it's a great way. The community has really come forward and really want to thank Mayor Quintero, helping us kind of get sponsorships put together. We've got Glendale Adventist as a presenting sponsor, and Glendale Memorial coming together to really support this event and help bring people out to fight cancer. So thank you to everyone in the City Parks Division.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go on, as I understand it from staff, I can -- Councilmember can now start making nominations for the different commissions in the city. So I have some I would like to put in nomination or put on the agenda for appointment. To the Audit Committee, Mia Lea. Clarkson Rec. Dottie Sharkey. Planning, Chang Lee. Stats, the Commission Women, Grace Walker, and the -- come on now. CDBG, Efren Oliveras. I'll get the others rounded up as soon as I can, so they can be put on agenda next week. Thank you. What is next, please?
Next is City Council and Staff Comments.
Comments? Ms. Friedman.
I have two comments tonight. The first is I wanted to congratulate the Glendale chapter of Arret Hamentman, who had the opening of their new facility on San Fernando Road on Sunday. This is a wonderful organization that is staffed primarily by volunteers and which serves hundreds of youth in our community. And I've been there and visited them, and they are teaming with children, running everywhere, playing, learning basketball, learning different games, and it's a really great service that they provide for all of Glendale and the surrounding community. And this new building will help them to increase their program to more children and give them some well-needed space. So I want to congratulate them. They also had presented the city council and the city with a plaque of appreciation, so I wanted to thank them in return for that, and I'm sure it's going to be a wonderfully successful building and program. Secondly, I wanted to tell the public that this last weekend I attended a water tour in Sacramento of the Delta, which was hosted by the MWD, the Metropolitan Water District. And this was a tour that they did to show policymakers and members of the public in Southern California more about where our water comes from and about the different threats that we face. And it was a very interesting tour, and it was also very alarming because of a lot of the situations that are going on in that area. The levees that hold the water back, that hold the saltwater back from the freshwater, many of them were constructed about 100 years ago, not really engineered, just by pouring dirt into place, and they fail constantly, flooding entire regions up there. And it's predicted that a major earthquake, or even a minor earthquake, could weaken the levees to the point to where they would cause flooding that would be tremendously devastating to the communities that live in that area, as well as to the drinking water that supplies most of this region and most of Southern California. Our fresh water could turn into saltwater overnight. So it's very important that we keep track of what's happening to the water supply up there, to the different pressures that are on the water, and that we make it known to our representatives in Sacramento how important it is that the state focus on water, on restoring the wetlands up there so that the natural protections can be put back into place, to be sure that the water is equitably distributed between agriculture and all of California, and to be sure that it's a focus for the state. And they have a lot to focus on now with the financial situation that the state is facing, but this is something that really can't wait. So to that end, I've asked our Water and Power Department to come back to the city council with a presentation that we can see and that the community can see to understand more about where our water comes from, why we're having a water shortage now, and what we can do about it, and at the same time to prepare a resolution, to go through first our Water and Power Commission, and then to come to city council to send hopefully a strong message to Sacramento that we're aware of what's happening in the Delta and that we want them to take immediate and strong action to bring ecological balance back to that region and to shore up the levees and to ensure that we have continued quality, clean water for this area.
Oh, I do, and I understand that there -- I do understand that we are going to be serving Delta smelt at that barbecue. Is that correct? Oh, no, no, those are endangered, aren't they?
You know, this is going to end up on YouTube somewhere, and Northern California is going to have even another reason to be upset. I'll just throw this out there also, that they actually truck fish up and down that river system. The fish are trying to spawn, the Delta smelt and salmon and invasive species that have been introduced like bass, and they come downriver and they're trying to spawn, and because we have this series of dams, they have to be put into trucks. They're siphoned off, put into trucks, and driven back upriver. And this goes on all day long, every day of the year, a tremendous taxpayer expense. So there are plans in the works and on the books to put in other canals that the fish could take, so the water could go one place and the fish could go another place, so the fish can live out their happy lives without having to take truck rides every few days. And we won't have to be spending money and employee time, hundreds of employees up there sorting fish all day and trucking them up and down the roads. It's pretty insane what's being done, and it's not the fault of the fish. And I'm not saying we shouldn't save the fish, but we should try to make that whole system work so that we don't have to be transporting finned animals over land.
I read an article a week or so ago, I think one of the power-producing companies is going to remove seven bridges, I mean, the seven dams in the next 10 years or so, so spawning can continue. Is that the same?
I'm sure that will help, but I don't think it's going to solve all of the problems.
We'll find out. We'll find out. Mr. Drayman, do you have anything to add?
To that? No.
No, no, don't take.
To that, no, but yes.
Council comments.
Yes, council comments. Well, under the heading of "If You Don't Return a Councilmember's Phone Call, They Call You Collect" at a council meeting, I have some questions about some constituent issues that I need an update on. I don't need the update tonight, I just want to make sure that I get them. I'm sure we all received emails related to the Kenneth Road issue, Mr. Don Snyder and his questions about the Common Area Driveways. We've been getting a number of emails back and forth, both from staff and residents there, but I just want to make sure that something comprehensive is being pulled together for -- as an answer, Mr. Hagani, do you -- can you?
Yes, we could pull something comprehensive together, but in short, I can tell you that everything was done with permits, and there's nothing else that staff could do at this point. It's all on private property with proper permits.
And staff has met with?
We have met with Mr. Snyder.
All right. So those questions have been addressed, at least?
They have been addressed. I cannot assure you that they'd be to his satisfaction.
Well, I understand that. My concern is only when the issues of public safety are raised, and this isn't about the aesthetic aspect, and I just want to make sure that we are looking at those as well.
We will.
Okay. Thank you. That was one item. The next has to do with Mr. Vince Takis and the landscaping issue down in the Fairmont flyover general area. I know, Mr. Zern, you had a meeting with him.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protam, Councilmember Drayman, I've met with Mr. Takis. We've gone over some of the options that are available to him. He's stated his preferences and very nice gentleman, very cooperative, so I'm looking into some of those. Couple of different extremes from some potential test case on some different types of applications, but we are definitely working with him.
Okay, thank you. The next is our recurring window, series of window emails. Mr. Hagani, could you remind the public again about the?
Yes.
The study session?
Yes. You might remember that this item was scheduled for council two weeks ago, and the mayor asked to remove it from the agenda and schedule a study session, which will be likely an afternoon study session. We have not secured the date, but as soon as we have it, we will let the public and the number of people who have applications or issues that we're working on cases with them, we will be informing them as well.
Okay. The next one has to do with a number of emails that I'm sure we're also all getting related to concerns about the aftermath of the fire as it relates to the Glendale Annex, and the meetings that were held, and how do we get more information? A lot of residents are asking. In particular, I just want to make sure that, Mr. Zern, it is appropriate to put them in contact with you or your department.
Absolutely.
When they have questions, I was approached, as I forwarded to you, information about Warren Beam, rather, as one resident and another resident today, Mr. Boucher, having to do with questions about making sure that the community knows when we're having these meetings, they were pretty well-attended.
Yeah.
So word is getting out somehow, but in any case, we might want to, even at city council meeting, let the public know that there is a place to get some of your questions answered, even if you can't make the meeting, and how to do that, to stay tuned to the website and?
Absolutely.
And so on. And then I think that takes care of it. I was also going to mention Unity Fest, but we already did that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam.
You're welcome. And Mr. City Clerk, I forgot one name to put in nomination. That's for the PPC arm Sahakian. Okay, Mr. Starber, you had a comment?
Yes, Mr. Weaver. We should note for anybody who might be in the audience for item 8D.
Oh, yes.
Which is the appeal of a special event permit denial for the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber Commerce Second Annual Fall Arts Festival. We received a communication from the executive director of the Montrose Verdugo Chamber asking that that item be withdrawn. They are withdrawing their appeal, so the item will come off calendar and will not be taken up this evening.
Thank you. And one thing, I asked an individual to come tonight to make some comments, article that was in the paper the other day about the amount of savings that we've had in water usage, and I thought was worthwhile to have Pat Hayes to come since Glenn Steiger's not available. Just let the committee know just how good you all are doing in conserving water.
Mayor Protam Weaver, councilmembers. I'm Pat Hayes, Principal Civil Engineer, GWP Water. I don't think GWP Water per se can take credit. It's really the customers in the system who have done an excellent job. As you are well aware, you passed a water conservation ordinance in the month of July that took effect in August, but the lead-up to that, we are seeing, we were seeing results already in July in anticipation of that new ordinance, so there was no delay on the part of residents taking the message to heart. Our base year is year 2006, and that is what we are comparing to in terms of what our allocations are from MWD. In the month of July, we saw a 20% reduction versus the base year and a 16% reduction for the month of August. We haven't seen the results yet for September, but that means we're buying less water from MWD, which had a rate increase as of the 1st of October, and that we are well within the bounds of meeting our goal for the annual allocations that we have without paying any additional fees.
So a reminder to everybody listening, just keep doing what you're doing because it really is working. I guess we were very successful getting the message out. It will be okay as long as everybody keeps doing what they're doing now. So thank you, Pat, for coming down and sharing.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protam, if I may, actually I have some staff comments, and we have a presentation on behalf of the city clerk's office and police. It's just a repeat of what announcement we made last weekend. For that, I'd actually like to invite up Maria Maldonado, a licensed investigator in the city clerk's office, who has been with the city actually for 29 years. She started when she was five years old. This year she will be working
This year, she will be working our exciting canine event, which is taking place—the taking the place of our annual low-cost vaccination clinic. Low-cost vaccinations for pet owners will still be available—for the pets of pet owners, actually. And this is her 23rd vaccination clinic, and I would like her to say a few words for the audience in attendance here and everyone watching at home. And we are actually running a commercial right now on the event. Maria.
Honorable Mayor Protem Weaver, members of council and fellow staff members. Yes, my name is Maria Maldonado, and I'm a licensed investigator at the City Clerk's Office. And what I would like to do tonight is remind everyone that the annual City Clerk-sponsored low-cost vaccination clinic, which was formerly held at the Civic Center Garage and Fire Station 28 in Locasena, is now going to be taking place at Verdugo Park. And it is going to be held this coming Saturday, October 10th, from 11:00 a.m. through 4:00 p.m., and we are going to be part of the canines in the park's special event. In addition, we are going to be offering low-cost dog and cat vaccinations, and pet owners can obtain physical examinations this year, deworming, flea control, nail trimming. Identification microchips are going to be also offered at a very, very reasonable cost. The City Clerk's Office is also going to be, this year, providing pet licensing services for the first time. A portion of the proceeds will be donated to the Glendale Police Department Canine Unit, so the City Clerk's Office is very, very excited about participating in this very worthwhile fundraiser. Please allow me to introduce Officer Marybel Feely and Sean Schulz from the Glendale Canine Unit. They are also here tonight to give you some additional information in regard to this very, very special event. Thank you.
There they are. I was wondering where the puppies were.
My name is Officer Feely, and this is Officer Schulz, and we have our canine partners here, Yudi. Yudi, that's my partner, and Officer Schulz's partner, Sam. And the reason we're here is to let everybody know about a wonderful event coming up this Saturday, October 10th, at Verdugo Park, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's a kid-friendly, dog-friendly event that we're going to have as a fundraiser for our unit. We're going to have all sorts of dog-related events, including low-cost vaccinations. So if anybody needs to have their dog shots done, we'll have Vaccination Clinic there. We have a pet adoption through the Pasadena Humane Society. We're having different contests for the dogs. We're having a Halloween costume contest, so make sure if you bring your dog, bring him in a costume, you could win a prize, as well as a tail-wagging talent contest. We'll have music there. We'll also have a live band playing. We'll have a delicious tri-tip barbecue. So many things, so many things to mention. Free face painting for children, bouncers, free balloons for the kids. Anything else?
Just a whole bunch of stuff, a bunch of fun stuff. And I just wanted to add that this event is co-sponsored by the City of Glendale, Parks Recreation, and Community Service, as well as the City Clerk's Office, and they've been a tremendous support in trying to get this event off the ground, and we look forward to a very successful, fun-filled event, so come, bring your family, bring your entire family, bring your dog, and come out and support a very well-worth program, which is our canine program.
You get to see all four of our canines there.
All right. You can leave them here to help us do law and order tonight if you want.
All right, oh, they certainly would. Well, thank you again, this Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Verdugo Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, council, actually, the stuffed dogs on the dais are part of the promotion. They are actually on sale. They will be on sale at the event as well there. If anyone wants to purchase them, the proceeds will go to also supporting the canine unit.
My granddaughter already has mine. Yes.
Mr. Weaver, before you leave council and staff comments, I just wanted, since you started the—the—
Ball rolling.
—ball rolling, I might as well go ahead and put in nomination, some that—not all, but some that I am prepared to announce at this time or to put forth at this time. For the Commission on the Status of Women, Linda Pillsbury Goodman. For Parks and Recreation, Richard Bennett. For Traffic and Parking Commission, Christopher Welch. For Fire—Building and Fire, Alex Wu. For Historic Preservation, Vreg Martian. For Planning, Bill Kane. And for Audit Committee, Edward Afari. And the others I will bring next time.
Okay. Let's finish the council comments. What is next, please?
Next is consent items, including minutes following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such a request before a motion is proposed.
I have cards on 5B and D. Were those two exceptions a motion? Draymond?
Yes, I will—Mr. Weaver, I will move the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond—
Yes.
Friedman—
Yes.
Mayor Najarian—sorry, Mayor Quintero and Mayor Protem Weaver.
All right. Please read 5B into the record.
5B is Director of Public Works Fire Chief regarding replacement of an aerial ladder truck for use by the Glendale Fire Department. A B1 is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of an aerial ladder truck from Pierce Manufacturing, Inc.
Mike Moehl, 2 minutes.
Good evening, council members. I always—I'm always here to support the Fire and the Police Department. Their need for a ladder or any type of equipment always gets my support. I only question the company by name of Pierce Manufacturing. Did any of the officers of this company give any campaign contributions to any councilman before they got the contract? That's my only question, a conflict of interest. If not, I don't see any reason why not. I'm sure that our police—our fire chief recommended this company, and hey, he knows his job better than I do, because that's not my job. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Harold.
Chief Coggins.
Stop.
Yes, I'll move 5B in the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Draymond—
Yes.
Friedman—
Yes.
Najarian—Mayor Quintero—Mayor Protem Weaver.
All right.
5D is Director of Public Works regarding development of a strategic plan for the Public Works Department of the City of Glendale. D1 is a motion authorizing the Director of Public Works to execute a professional services agreement with the Lewis Group for $88,200. Mr. Mayor Protem, if you could, please, thank you.
I didn't know I kept shutting it off. Okay, two speakers. First, Herbert Milano, 2 minutes each.
Mayor Protem Weaver, members of the City Council, my name is Herbert Milano. I'm here to ask you to reconsider the approach that you're taking towards this particular agreement. This proposal is the third such initiative the city has taken recently. The Police Department did their own strategic planning, the Glendale Water and Power did theirs, and now this department will pursue this initiative independent of a city-wide strategic plan, which I think all of the strategic plans should be aligned. And those are the general practices that are—the best cities are running today. You start with an overall general strategic plan for the city, and then all the departments align themselves to it. The previous strategic plan by the Department of Public Works—I have taken a look at it, I read it—and the plan was not a plan that had the most current standard practices with regard to performance-driven measures. When I requested it, the plan was basically pulled out of some file. People did not know where it was. They finally pulled it out. It means it's a document that is not alive, or it was not used in a very active way, in a continual way, to check the performance of the department towards overall citywide goals. It is my hope that the city will take a different tack to this initiative. My suggestion is that all department heads and assistant department heads perhaps can take some courses in the balanced scorecard, in an investment that could probably be better served overall for the city, so that everyone can align to the same concepts. The strategic plan by the balanced scorecard is used by the top companies and the top cities, is used by the federal government, by the Corps of Civil Engineers, by the Orange County, and actually brought here some examples that you can watch if you have the time, with regard to public work, strategic plans from other cities, that gives us definitive measures of performance, and I think it's something that the City of Glendale needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mike Moehl, 2 minutes.
Good evening, council members. Mike Moehl, resident Glendale. Just have—I just made a bunch of random questions. The question—first question I asked was, was there a competitive bid for this contract? Does the city attorney or city clerk know if this company gave any money to any city employee or council members in the past? Has anybody verified the company's work? Is the company insured? What is this company's DMV rating? What is the background of the Lewis Group? How come there is nobody in the Public Works Department doing this strategic planning? They have plenty of people in the department, because what they're going to do, they're going to come and ask people within the department, say, "What do you think?" Upper management can ask the same question without spending $88,200. "What do you think?" Thank you.
Thank you. Is there motion 5D?
Well, I just wanted to actually ask Mr. Zern, since there's been some questions about this particular item, and since I wasn't here for the last round 10 years ago. When these strategic plans are developed, is there a sort of a charge that you give to your consultants to come up with a plan with certain goals, or do you ask them to do a review of your department and come up with sort of independent goals? And then, does the council see their report and sort of a strategic—the plan of how you're going to implement their priorities and their recommendations?
Council—Mayor Protem, Councilmember Friedman, I'll start from your last question. Absolutely. And I will refer to the recent strategic plan that was done by the Water and Power Department, where it was very much brought back to council, a presentation, a promise of updates on progress, and that's exactly the way we wish to proceed. As far as whether we set a defined series of goals, or whether we ask the consultant to look at our operations and suggest goals, it's a little bit of both. Part of what we want to do is get an outside opinion and an objective opinion on what they see from their professional opinion, and based on what they've seen in other departments, how we're doing things, could we do things better? We also have—or I have—a defined set of goals that I want them to implement or gear us towards implementing to better reach the successes that we feel we're capable of reaching. Really, for us, it's because it's time. It's well over 10 years ago. Mr. Milano referred to the plan being stale and all of the things I think I alluded to in my report, being—the department and the whole environment we live in has changed immensely in the last 10 years. So we definitely feel it's time to do that. We're very impressed by what was done in the Water and Power Department. We think that's—I think that's the direction we should be going with Public Works, but we're at a time right now, almost a crossroads type of period, with the budget and the situation that we're in. We have a lot of vacant positions due to hiring freeze. It's a great opportunity for us to look at restructuring, redefining our mission, looking to see if in-house provision versus contract provision is a better way to go in certain applications. So there's a lot of opportunity, I think, right now. Did I answer—
And you feel comfortable, obviously, with this particular firm?
I was very—Ms. Friedman, I'm very impressed with Mr. Lewis. Again, we're familiar with him as a city because of what he's done with water and power. He has a lot of experience with utility and public works-type operations. I met with him extensively prior to making this recommendation, and I have a great comfort level. And our management, upper management in Public Works, will be actively involved in developing this plan, because you can't just develop a plan. Have somebody go in our office somewhere else and develop a plan, and then expect us to implement it. Our managers will be actively involved in contributing towards this, what is ultimately going to be their strategic plan, and a plan that they will live by and have to implement in their various divisions.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Zern. I think the implication, though, is being made that somehow GWP did their own, but you're not doing your own. I think that's the implication that's being made here. And if you read the report, you see very clearly that the strategic planning—I mean, the consultant that was hired for that was the same group.
Correct.
So it's not as though—I mean, and it was a wonderful presentation and a comprehensive strategic plan that GWP did, but it's not as though Mr. Steiger picked up the phone and assigned it to half a dozen employees and said, "Go out and do this." They hired the same consultant.
Correct.
And that's what—apparently what you're proposing and why you are also comfortable with this firm.
That is correct.
So it isn't as though other departments have done their own, and Mr. Zern's department isn't capable of that, so he's going to hire somebody to do his homework for him. That's the implication being presented at the dais. I just want to make sure that that portion of it was answered.
Correct.
You're writing your own term paper.
Correct.
Okay, is there motion on 5D?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Draymond—
Yes.
Friedman—
Yes.
Najarian—Mayor Quintero—Mayor Protem Weaver.
All right. What's next, please?
Next would be oral communications.
And it's been the policy, and since I'm sitting in for one day, we'll continue the policy. The only thing I've mentioned to some of my colleagues and to the city manager in the past, I would like to see if my colleagues would accept agendizing, moving the announcement portion to 5:30 to 6:00. We have eight people that want to give announcements tonight, and basically, you people that are giving the announcements are not so much announcing it to us, you're announcing it to the public at home. If we gave you a half an hour block, 5:30, 6:00 on TV, it might make a lot more sense. Five minutes each, you got from 5:30 to 6:00. This is now, eight cards. The number keeps growing. And everybody wants to promote their event, so why not have a block of time for it? So, do I have any support to—
I'm certainly willing to discuss it.
Just to discuss, doesn't mean we're going to do it, but—
I would agree. I'm perfectly happy to talk about that with the rest of the council and see if it's—if there's a consensus to do just that.
Okay. Now, having said that, these are three-minute ones. I prefer two. If you can do it in two, do it. But you do have three. Arno Eretzian, followed by Margaret Agus, is it? And Marie Abrams. Can't read the handwriting too well.
Yeah, Marie Abrams is already here.
Oh, is that in here for? I only have seven anymore. Then that'd be followed by Ru Solbi and Wanda Wheeler.
Dear City Council Members, dear Mayor Protem Weaver, I was here two weeks ago to announce this, but I had a life—human-sized chicken before me and a guy with a wig after me for the—
Duck.
A duck, sorry. So I think it took away from the seriousness of my event, so I'm here to give it one more shot. I'm here on behalf of Avril Bookstore to announce the event Adana 1909 that we're presenting, the Centennial Memorial of the Adana Massacres, and it's also sponsored by the Glendale Public Basically, 100 years ago, in a city of Adana in southern Turkey, 30,000 Armenians were massacred at the hands of mobs of Turks and Kurds. Basically, it was a time of revolution and counter-revolution in Turkey, where two groups, the young Turks and the Sultan Hamid, were trying to—struggling to take control of the government, and during this chaos, the Armenian population was targeted, and anti-Armenian pilgrims' riots were assembled, where Armenian businesses and homes were burnt down, women and children were beaten and raped, and more than 30,000 Armenians were killed by sword, gun, and mass burnings. And I'm Adana, see, my grandparents were from Adana, and I live in a city where it has the largest population of Armenians next to the capital of Armenia, so we felt it's very important to have an event commemorating these massacres. So we're having two speakers. First of all, it's going to take place this Sunday, October 11th, at 4:00 p.m. at the Glendale Central Library. We have two speakers with us, Ara Sarafyan from London, the Gomitaz Institute, and local historian Garabet Momdjian. This will follow with a multimedia presentation inspired by the work of authors Siamonto and Zabel Yesayan, who wrote about these massacres. It will be done by local actors and musicians, such as the members from the Element Band. And it'll—the evening will end with the opening reception for the photo exhibit, the— And it'll, the evening will end with the opening reception for the photo exhibit Destruction of Armenians in Adana 1909, which is a rare photographic record by Ernst Jaak, who was a German activist at the time in Adana, who recorded all of this destruction. And we, it actually, this exhibit opened yesterday, and it's on display at the, right in the middle of the library on the main floor, and it's going to be there until October 26th. And this, if you have any more questions, you can contact us at 818-243-4112, or the Glendale Public Library at 548-3288. And I think this is very important nowadays because of what's happening with the Turkish government. They're still trying to make us forget what happened, these events and the genocide. And especially with the Unity Fest, it's going to, it's on the same day of the Unity Fest, right down the street. And lastly, I think attending this event and seeing what happened in Adana will make us appreciate living in Glendale with the Unity and having events such as the Unity Fest. Thank you.
Ruth and Wanda, followed by John Locasio.
Council viewers, as a member of the Glendale Commission on the Status of Women, I wanted to announce beating breast cancer. That will be a luncheon and informational meeting, co-sponsored by the Commission and Glendale Memorial Hospital. It'll be on Tuesday, October 13th, at noon in the main auditorium of the hospital, and I thought I'd have Wanda Wheeler give us more details. My brother-in-law's father died of breast cancer, so breast cancer certainly isn't confined just to women. Wanda Wheeler is the managing supervisor at the Marcia Ray Breast Center at Glendale Memorial Hospital.
Party of the time.
Thank you. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and it's very important because every woman is at risk for breast cancer.
Men too.
And men too. But one in eight women will have breast cancer in her lifetime. So, and because of that, we at Glendale Memorial Hospital, in conjunction with the Glendale Commission on the Status of Women, are dedicated to informing our community on how to beat breast cancer. Glendale Memorial is involved in several different venues, and one of which is the Commission on the Status of Women here in Glendale's meeting this Monday, October 12th. We will be speaking on breast cancer awareness and also on how to do breast self-examination. We'll be teaching that. Also, Senator Carol Liu is having a women's conference at the Castaways on October 30th, and Glendale Memorial will be there, giving free flu shots, as well as our medical director of the Marcia Ray Breast Center will be giving a speech on breast cancer diagnosis and treatment. And as Ruth spoke about, our premier event is at the Symposium at our main auditorium, and we will have four different local experts. Dr. Klaus Ukar will be giving a overview of the screening and diagnosis of breast cancer. Dr. Linus Kusloskis will be talking about treatment through radiation oncology. Also, Dr. Al Jazarli will be speaking about treatment with chemotherapy, and Dr. Nubar Bagosian will be speaking about what's new in chemo and radiation, in surgical treatment and other types of treatment of breast cancer. So, we would like to invite all to be a part of these things because we are very interested in making sure that all persons know about breast cancer. And mammograms save lives. If you're a woman, have one. If you, and your loved ones, make sure they have theirs too. Thank you.
Thank you.
And October 13th, that we have been talking about, is a free event to the public, so thank you.
John Locasio, followed by Leon Mayer.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Weaver. My name is John Locasio. I'm representing the Glendale Historical Society, and I'm here tonight to announce our upcoming annual Fall Home Tour this Sunday, October 11th, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. This year's tour is called At Home in Glendale's Historic Districts. We're featuring six houses in our three adopted historic districts. Tickets are thirty dollars per person, twenty dollars for historical society members. They may be purchased online at www.glandalehistorical.org, and they may also be purchased the day of the event at the Assistance League of Glendale at 314 East Harvard Street. So, I hope that you will all join us on Sunday for what promises to be a very interesting and fun tour. Thank you.
Thank you. Leon Mayer, followed by Colin Bogart.
Honorable Mayor Weaver, members of the council and staff, my name is Leon Mayer, and I'm here tonight primarily on behalf of the Glendale Public Library to announce and reiterate that One Book, One Glendale event is now going on. We had Invisible China a couple of weeks ago. On October 20th, we're having Jenny Cho, who will talk about the book, The Chinatown in Los Angeles. Now, this is a photo album, historical photo album, that takes us back 150 years when Chinese people first started settling in China downtown, in Los Angeles downtown. They settled initially at the site of the Union Station. Unfortunately, plans were made for the Union Station, so they had to move to another area downtown, and then they moved again and again till finally reached the Chinatown we all know. So, come on August, October 20th, to the library to see Jenny Cho. She's part of the Chinese, Los Angeles Chinese Historical Society, should be very interesting. And this event is part of the One Book, One Glendale event that is already going on. And on October 28th, 7 o'clock, we will have the main event on the One Book, One Glendale. Incidentally, One Book, One Glendale is co-chaired by people, two hard-working ladies at the Glendale Library who've been there for years, Mary Alice Wallum and, excuse me, and Pat Sider. They've worked hard putting this event together, and we're having a famous author, Chinese author by the name of Lisa C. Lisa C. was born in Paris. Her mother was a famous author, and she was educated at Merriman College, and she's written several books. And the first book she wrote was Gold Mountain. Gold Mountain was about her great-great-grandfathers coming to California and followed the family history from then into the Los Angeles area. Now, the book that Carolyn C. has written for our particular event is Shanghai Girls. Shanghai Girls is a book about some young ladies who started in China, and they came here to Los Angeles, and it's a fascinating book about their history, and it goes back to 1937 to 57 in Los Angeles. Come to these events. Thank you very much.
Colin Bogart, followed by Elaine Wilkerson.
Mayor Protem Weaver, city council members, city staff, good evening. My name is Colin Bogart. I work for the L.A. County Bicycle Coalition, working in Glendale on the Place Grant Safe and Healthy Streets Project, and I'm here to announce an event we have this Thursday night. This Thursday night will be, and I have a slide to show you for this, Thursday night will be the first in a series of five Safe and Healthy Streets community meetings. This will be at the Central Library Auditorium from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. The goal of this community meeting is to get people, residents and people who work in Glendale, to come and talk to us about their experiences, either walking or biking in Glendale, good or bad. As opposed to last week's presentation, I won't be doing the talking. We're going to be encouraging the members of the community to do the talking and to tell us about their experiences, and then ultimately, that information will be used to help shape the policy recommendations that we will present as part of the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan. For more information about this, you can call 818-334-9731, or you can go to the website, And once again, this is the first in a series of meetings, this Thursday night at 6:30 PM at the Glendale Central Library. Thank you.
Elaine Wilkerson, followed by Christine Harmon and Mike Perry.
Mayor Protem, members of council, my name's Elaine Wilkerson, and I'm here to remind you that we're having a special event on Tuesday, October 13th, as a fundraiser for the Habitat for Humanity Geneva Homes that will be very special. BJ's is opening up the restaurant to us and providing a pizza, pasta, and salad buffet, and there'll be entertainment, and for a small charge of twenty dollars, you'll be able to enjoy this evening out, and all the money will be going to the Habitat Homes, every dollar. And so, we encourage you to come and bring your friends. I know it's a council night, so we start at 5:00, just so you could have pizza before your meeting. Hope you can make it, and if there are any questions, people can email me at wilker@al.com. Thanks again.
Martha was a super mixer tonight, too. 5:30 to 8:00 or something. Here we are. Hey, Christine and Mike.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Protem Weaver, city council, staff, everybody else, too. We're here from the Montrose for Dugo City Chamber of Commerce, and as you know, last Saturday was the 32nd Annual Oktoberfest. It went wonderfully. It was a smashing hit. There were literally thousands of people that came through the day and enjoyed the food, the beer, the games, and had a great time through the day and the evening. We even heard from some of the shops in the area, too, that they had very healthy sales that day. Restaurants served a lot of food, and so, in looking to buy Glendale, I think we did great and everyone had a great time.
Yeah, a lot of the extra traffic were people from as far as Monrovia, Santa Monica, Santa Clarita. They just loved Montrose. A lot of them went shopping and enjoyed the festivities. A number of the volunteers we had were from our local Boy Scout troops and the local high schools, and they, they were so neat to watch them work. You know, as far as, if this is the future, we noticed that the strong work ethic in these kids, that America will be just fine. The crews from the city, we have to, it was amazing, the, all the city departments from Glendale, the police department, the fire department, the street maintenance, all the other staff from the city, they just did a fantastic job, and we're so grateful. We also, Christine's going to give you guys invitations. We have a new business opening, a ribbon-cutting on Thursday at 5:00 in the area, and those are invitations for you guys to attend.
Oh, that's the announcement, right?
That's the announcement.
Thank you very much to everyone in the city that really helped us pull this Oktoberfest together. It takes a lot of people to make this work, and it did. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was under a minute.
Was?
They had beautiful weather this time, Mr. Weaver.
Not bad, Mike.
Without the wig.
Go have a good evening. Okay, I have no more, I have no more speaker cards on announcements. Okay, what is next?
Mr. Mayor Protem, at eight under action items is the city manager at 8A regarding requests from the American Cancer Society's Glendale Relay for Life Committee for cosponsorship of the 6th Annual 2009 Glendale Relay for Life Event at 8A1, is a motion to cosponsor the 6th Annual Glendale Relay for Life Event.
I don't know why this isn't under the consent items. It's usually a slam dunk, but you want to say something briefly about it?
Well, you have the announcement this evening. We're happy to answer any questions. This is a 6th.
There's a motion for 8A1. Mr. Drayman.
I'll move 8A1.
I'll second.
We'll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian, Mayor Quintero, Mayor Protem Weaver.
Hi. Thank you, Ms. Milano.
Thank you.
Next, please.
At AP is Acting Chief of Police regarding discussion regarding the police department's implementation of an area command service delivery model. At B1 is motion to note and file report.
And Mr. Mayor Protem and members of council, I don't think our item will be quite as brief, but hopefully, we won't take too much of your time.
Who had a, whose daughter's birthday was today? That wasn't yours, was it? Somebody else said they couldn't be here because their daughter had a.
Oh, Mr. Hoffman, Al Hoffman, I believe, sent an email indicating he wished to speak on this topic but was unable to attend tonight because of his daughter's birthday. So, but anyway, we're very pleased to take a few moments of your time and bring back to you just an update on our concept of area command. And if you recall, when we were last before you discussing the implementation of some pretty serious budget reductions, part of the strategy that we recommended to you, your name.
It's pretty obvious who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, I'm not very good at sign language, so I wasn't interpreting your, I'm sorry. My name is Ron DiPampa. I'm the interim chief here at City of Glendale Police Department. And to that end, when we were, when we were last here, we talked about some concepts to implement some rather serious budget and service reductions in the police department, and of course, we're grappling with that citywide. One of the important concepts we brought before you and received your blessing to proceed with was this area of reorganizing into an area command model. And we have been proceeding down that road, and it's timely now to come back and let you know a little bit about our progress and what the immediate future holds. But you know, even though the focus tonight is certainly on area command, it's not in and of itself a strategy that isn't supported with some other concepts that we wanted to certainly bring back to you folks and the general public. And when we look at area command, what we intend to do is create in a area 24/7 accountability for dealing with problems and issues that can become public safety concerns. And so, some themes that we want to address is certainly engage the public in that process. We want to create active partnerships with the members of those communities in dealing with these issues and provide them, really, with a single point of contact for responsive leadership. And that's the essence of area command, and I'm going to introduce to you shortly Captain Kirk Palmer, who's in charge of our Field Services Division and responsible for the actual overall implementation of this very new direction for the Glendale Police Department. But just briefly, I wanted to mention, there's two other very important concepts that support this, and that is the creation of timely information in the department and the bringing in of more enabling technology. So, if I could briefly talk about what I mean by timely information, and that is, we are currently working hard to enhance our information systems that have been very disparate and have not really served us well in kind of a coordinated fashion. But we believe that by tying these systems together, we can create a very robust system that will help us create an environment that's rich in information. And what I'm talking about there is that information that will drive everything we do, that good intelligence will be the foundation of where we send our resources, how we address issues, where we focus our priorities and such, and not only that, but that good information then will help us measure the outcomes and ensure that we're hitting the mark and being as effective as we can. And then also bringing in enabling technology, and I know we briefly talked to you about some of the projects that are on the horizon, one being the Regional DNA Laboratory that we're about to embark on its implementation as well, and that will be a significant advancement for us here, as well as our neighboring cities of Burbank and Pasadena. And then, most recently, the implementation of video surveillance technology through our Safe City Project. And so, what we want to do is certainly focus and give you an update on area command, but let you understand that there's a lot of other things that have to be in place in order for it to work, and if we don't have the timely information and the enabling technology, then area command is not going to be very effective. And so, one of the, in terms of the timely information, one of the projects we're embarking And so, one of the, in terms of the timely information, one of the projects we're embarking upon is we've entitled it I-LEAD, and it stands for Information-Led Enforcement and Accountability Data. And this goes to the project of tying together all our information systems so they serve us well. And we will be coming to you in the near future with a more in-depth explanation and update of that effort. And I think it's going to be pretty exciting for us in the future in terms of directing what we do. But that's for another date. Tonight, what we'd like to do is give you an introduction of what we've, where we're at to date in the implementation of area command, certainly introduce to you the geographic areas as they're currently defined, and probably more important than anything else is introduce to you the very capable police managers that will serve in that area command role. And then, your questions and any direction or ideas is welcome, and that would help us in terms of bringing it to fruition. So, having said that, let me introduce Captain Kirk Palmer, just to go over a few points with you and introduce the geographic areas.
Captain Kirk.
Captain Kirk. Thank you, Chief DiPampa, Mayor Protem Weaver, members of council, city staff. Kirk Palmer is captain assigned to the Field Services Division here for the Glendale Police Department, and have been given the opportunity by Chief DiPampa to implement this area command. I can tell you that as a management team here, along with my lieutenants, we're excited about this. I think this is, I think this is a great step for the Glendale Police Department in terms of how we deliver services. You know, unfortunately, we talk about this budget crisis and how it's affected us, but I think, as a lot of departments have done, we've taken this as an opportunity, tried to use the urgency that the crisis has created, and make some fundamental changes in our, in the way we do business. So just, I'm going to give you, just try to give you a brief overview in terms of what the area command is, and if I could have the next slide. Just kind of roll back. I took over field services on July 25th, and as you recall from the budget discussions, you know, the challenge for this particular division was, how do we continue to provide what I consider a high-quality 911 services? When I took the division over, I can tell you, the previous management had done a very, very good job of balancing call load and staffing, and that's something that had reduced overtime and something that I didn't want to impact in terms of trying to create this area command. So in other words, when somebody picks up the phone, we have the police officers and resources, and we can get people to citizens quickly, and I think that's what the citizens of Glendale expect. So my first goal was to do no harm to that. So, area command, it's both, we talk a lot about reorganization. It's both a structure, but more importantly, I think it's a management philosophy. And the reason I think that's important is because we're able to implement the management philosophy as kind of the guiding principle for what drove our restructuring of the department. The management philosophy says, we're going to take those individuals in the police department, in this case, four lieutenants assigned to Field Services Division, those managers that have the greatest access to resources, and charge those managers, hold them accountable for understanding the unique issues in their individual geographic regions, and for directing police resources in a focused way to address problems. So that's the philosophy. That's the easy part, because we already have four lieutenants assigned to Field Services, and we've already adopted that philosophy. Our organizational structure we've done is taken a leadership team, put together a group of individuals, including these managers, cross-section of our department, and asked them to come up with a structure. And one of the first things that I asked them to do was, take a look at the boundaries, and let's divide the city geographically in a way that makes sense. And when I say that, again, the city had previously been broken up into five geographic boundaries. That's how we deployed resources, and that's how we continue to deploy resources. And so, there was a lot of discussion, should we redistrict the city? And again, as I mentioned, I didn't want to do any harm to our existing 911 response capabilities. So, behind you, and if I could go to the next slide, and you can see why I brought the larger map here, that slide represents the manner in which we have broken down the city into four main geographic areas. And for just terminology, we've called these the North, East, West, and South Commands. Pretty simple. And what we've tried to do here is, we've tried very hard to divide the city up in a way that reflects our current districting, using census tracts and reporting districts that are already in place. But at the same time, in our research, one of the things we heard from other cities using this is, don't divide neighborhoods. That many of these neighborhoods are well-defined, they have separate identities, they have very specific needs, and so, we have tried very hard to set up geographic regions that don't break up neighborhoods. And I can tell you that these boundaries have been somewhat in flux, even up to last night, when I had a chance to talk to the homeowners coordinating council, and got some very valid feedback. Our CPAC group, our police advisory group, one of the members had a very astute observation regarding the Verdugo Woodlands. And so, we've made changes to these boundaries to take these kind of issues into consideration. And right now, before you, is we have the proposed boundaries for our geographic command, pending your direction and comments. Our intention is to declare this operational October 11th, which will be next Sunday. Each one of these commands will have one lieutenant, manager assigned, accountable for that. In addition, each geographic area will have at least one community lead officer, with the exception of our Southern Command, which will have two lead officers assigned, and basically be open for business. One quick comment now, in the shaded area in the Southern Command is the boundaries of the proposed Business Improvement District. We foresee the possibility that somewhere down the line, that business district may represent a fifth area command. But for now, that area will be incorporated in our South Command, and will be serviced by not only the area commander, the two community lead officers, but also by our downtown policing unit, which is already in place. So, again, that is the current boundaries. I'll tell you, one thing I wanted to make very clear, what this isn't is a substitute for 911 for the public. So when you have an issue, when you're the victim of a crime, when you need emergency police services, this is really transparent to the public. You simply pick up the phone, call, and we'll respond in exactly the same manner that we always have. This particular policing format will be used to deal with long-term issues, macro-level issues, and other things that come up. Just a quick, very quick example of how effective this particular policing model can be. Right now, we're already working a project in our North Command area. We'd identified a narcotics problem that seems to be growing up in the area, specifically the use of heroin by many young people up in that area. It was impacting the high schools. We were seeing trends in terms of auto burglaries, we were seeing robberies. Our investigation has uncovered some gang activity that was flying below the radar. But one of the goals of this particular policing model is to break down the compartmentalization of the department. So when we have a gang problem, traditionally, gangs would handle that. If we had a traffic problem, which we hear quite often in the city, then that was traffic's problem. What we're trying to do is bring a multidisciplinary approach to solving problems. And in this particular, with this particular issue, we brought gangs in to do work in terms of the gangs we've identified, brought narcotics in to interdict and interrupt the flow of narcotics to these young people. We're using community policing techniques in order to build support structures and bring in other social support issues for the parents of these individuals, special enforcement detail to address enforcement issues. And this is all under the direction of one specific area commander. In this case, Lieutenant Ian Grimes is with us today. It's just one example of how a macro-level problem can be very effectively addressed through the use of area command. So, next slide, if you would, please. Again, just kind of wrap it up. The benefits, establish specific accountability. It's nice as a captain, because when I have an issue in a particular area, I have one person I need to go to in order to develop strategies for focused enforcement. Provides a community with a single point of contact for area issues and concerns. As our area commanders get out into the community, which is one of the things we expect, and get to know the homeowners groups, and they get to know these individuals, they have that point of contact to bring concerns to our attention. Transitions the department from a unit-based community policing format to a division-based, in this case, the Field Services Division, and quite honestly, provides the department with a structure and strategy to cope with recent budget and personnel reductions. Next slide. I just want to introduce our area commanders here. Our North Command will be Lieutenant Ian Grimes. Unfortunately, South Command is Lieutenant Brian Cohen, and I don't say that because it's unfortunately Brian Cohen. Unfortunately, Brian Cohen's not with us today. Our East Command will be Lieutenant Tony Fuchsia, and our West Command, the capable Lieutenant Susan Hain. The bottom boxes there indicate the community lead officers that'll be assigned to each area. As you can see in the South Command, as I said, because of the density issues and the fact we have combined two traditional districts, we'll be using two community lead officers. But we feel this is a comprehensive and appropriate approach to both community policing and focusing resources. Last night at the homeowners coordinating council, I was asked, so you're just doing this because they cut your budget? And my response to that was, no, we're doing this in spite of the budget cuts. Because I can tell you, even if I had additional personnel, and I think Chief DiPampa would echo this, this is a direction we believe in. We are going to be successful with area command, and I do believe that this is the way the Glendale Police Department will conduct policing and enforcement for some time to come. So we're all excited about this. And last slide would just be comments and questions and directions from council.
What other cities have gone to this command system? May many?
I sure can. We actually had the City of Irvine come in, talk about their area command format. Certainly, the Santa Ana Police Department has used that. City of Ontario uses area command. But really, one of the most effective uses of area command, in my opinion, and where I draw, at least my mental model for what area command should be, is from the Los Angeles Police Department, Bill Bratton's comstat, and his success in New York. And again, you know, this, he echoes, and I believe this, this isn't just, this isn't an organizational structure. We'll bring in I-Leads to provide additional information to assist what we're learning from the community, but really, this is a management philosophy, and this is about accountability.
What I was trying to get at, some people might think this is a whole new concept you just brainstormed up, mentioning the cities that already have it. I mean, it's nothing new, but the success that they've had in those cities is a key reason to go to it here.
Well, and that's, Mr. Weaver, that's certainly very true. I can tell you that, I would say, the majority of agencies in Southern California do not use area command. They rely on what we call the professional policing model. But I really think more and more, as intelligence-led policing begins to blossom, that we'll see more and more of this particular command structure. I'd like to say, to a certain extent, that with LAPD notwithstanding, that we're on the front end of this area command project.
And where will our constituents find these commanders? In the police building? Will they still be held there? They won't be out in a satellite office.
Well, again, really, what I'm holding my managers accountable for is understanding the needs and focusing resources. So we'll be coming up with a website where a resident will be able to go to that website, click on the map, and that particular area commander will come up, contact information. And so, if you have some sort of ongoing, long-term problem, or some question, or something we can help you with, or you want to bring to our attention, you know, right now, a simple email to the area commander would be very effective. But I want to emphasize, if you have a call for service, you're a victim of a crime, or you have an emergency, pick up the phone and call the department like you have for the past years.
The general public will get to know the area commanders, and they'll, you'll get to know them, correct?
That's certainly the intention of this program. That's actually a key component.
Instead of trying to find the chief around the whole city, you can now go find a commander in the field that you can lean on.
Exactly. And I can be a tough guy to find, so this will work out a lot better. But before we, what I'd like to do is have each commander just, again, give you their names, so the community can put a name with a face, and let them tell you how many years they've been serving the Glendale Police Department. So, we could do that real quickly.
Tony Fuchsia, I'm going to be the East Command. I've been with the department for 28 years. I've worked a variety of assignments in the organization, and I'm intimately familiar with a lot of the issues that we have, not only in the entire city, but in the East Command area.
You're my sector, I'll be calling you.
I know that.
We already know.
How are you, Ian Grimes? And I'm in charge with the North Command, and been on the department for 29 years.
Hi, welcome, and my name is Susan Hain. I'll be the area commander for the West Command, and I've been with the organization for 24 and a half years.
You have Kelly?
Kelly, yes, Anis, I do.
So as you can see, we've got a wealth of experience that comes into the project, and I'm quite certain they'll be very, very successful in helping to solve problems out there in their assigned communities. And so with that, if there's any other questions or direction you have for us?
You want to ask questions first?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Okay.
You have a mean etch-a-sketch, for starters.
Thank you for the challenge.
And I want to compliment you. Even though sometimes the catalyst can be budget, not necessarily the cause, but the catalyst.
Absolutely.
This is, I think, a, I think this is going to work very well. And I know that, I know the city's going to benefit from it in many ways. I think it will also help to personalize the department in terms of our residents. And I think that is, that can only be of benefit. The rest of my comments I'll reserve, but I just wanted to thank you. And you were so responsive to this council's desire to find, with your help, a new way to go that would also help to take into account our unique budget issues right now. So I want to thank you again, chief.
Well, thank you for the support.
Just one other thing, Mr. Starburton, I've had this conversation. When you get into tough economic times, sometimes it forces you to go dig where, good times, you've got so much going, you're not thinking about it. This is an example of, I'm sure you had it in your mind for years, but these times really was a catalyst to go ahead, and then you found the savings that it would bring also. So, you know, that's one of the silver linings out of this budget crisis we're going through.
Well, and we couldn't accomplish it without two things. One, the challenge of this council to lead us in that direction, and secondly, the support to make it happen. So we're indebted to you folks.
Well, good. Well, I have four cards, if you want to stick around, just in case you need to respond, and we'll comment a little more. Four speakers, let's try two minutes each. Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Weaver, members of the city council, city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. I want to say that this turn of events with regard to these initiatives, I find just an amazing maturity that is coming forth, I think. The whole idea of seeing a department take a lead in talking about accountability and performance measures and transparency and reporting is fantastic. I think it's, I think it could not have been done without the lead of the city manager as well. The, I've been looking at crime statistics for a long time. You've probably seen me, you know, address the issues with a prior chief. I have the highest confidence in Chief DiPampa to make this city even safer than what it is right now. When I was looking at the data for the city of LA and compared that to the city of Glendale, I found some similarities. During Chief Bratton, which almost matched Chief Adams's tenure, Los Angeles increased their police force by over 20% and had a decline in crime, we had an increase in police force exceeding 20%, and we had an increase in crime. So Chief DiPampa has some significant challenges ahead, but I think that taking an approach that transparency and accountability on a periodic basis to the community, I think, will be fantastic. For those of you who are not aware of how the city of Los Angeles provides transparency, you can go on the web at any time, and under the police department's website, you can actually click on any particular area and know exactly what crimes occurred in your neighborhood during the past seven days, or the past 14 days, or the past three months. I hope we get to the point where this city that deserves to really be one of the best and safest cities in the country, I think we have some fantastic leadership in both with Captain Palmer and Chief DiPampa to make this thing happen. It's good for the city.
Thank you. Margaret Hammond, followed by Mike Mulville.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the council, staff. Good evening, Mayor Potem, members of the council staff, and the audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, and I am always in support of the police department. I'm sure you all are well aware of that. And very, I and a multitude of other people were very happy about the three officers being kept on the force. One of the things, and I think this is a terrific plan, to have people be accountable for a certain area, that you know that you can go to that person and say, "This needs to be taken care of. This is a problem here." One of the things that is a little bit touchy for me is, of course, the fact that the population of the south area is 50% of the city population. And therefore, that means that the other three districts will have, what, 25% each? Or not even that. No, I'm sorry, that's not a total. But at any rate, a smaller percentage will be under the direction of, in the other areas. And I know that the area in the south used to be one and two, and has now been combined into one. And I did hear the part that there are going to be two lead officers under the command, which is very, which is excellent, because it means that therefore there will be a lot of accountability and direction. The other thing is that I would like to know, for instance, the crime rates. You know, I'd like to know, what is the crime rate in the percentage-wise of the city in the south area? I mean, I know that, as I say, that there are going to be two lead officers, and there are going to be, you know, the accountability will be there for people who want to call. I myself, I brag all the time, wherever I go, as to picking up the phone, calling, and having an officer turn up. And as I said, that has always been my concern, and we are very fortunate to have that within our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Mulville, followed by Rick Barnes.
Good evening, Mayor Potem, Weaver, council members. Mike Mulville, resident of Glendale. I'd like to ditto what Mr. Milano had to say and Margaret Hammond. One area of concern is the fact that, as Margaret said, 50% of the population is south of the 134 freeway. I spoke with Mr. DePampa, the police chief, and he said they put two extra ones there because of the high-density population. My question is, is that enough for the south part of Glendale? Did we make this decision based on population or on crime statistics? The other point is, you know, the more and more you read about regional policing, and I'm wondering if now is the time that we should think about regional policing and fire, including, to include Burbank and Pasadena, the sister cities. Under these difficult economic times, maybe we should think about, you know, we have the MTA, which is regional. Maybe police and fire should be regional, too. We have limited staff, personnel. Maybe on the east and the west side of Glendale, we can have Burbank and Pasadena help us. We can help them. Forget about the borders. Maybe we can eliminate some upper management and have more people, more policemen themselves, and less management, more policemen on the force itself. But right now, we have to deal with what we have. Again, I wish we had fewer, you know, more people south of the 134 freeway, where the crime in the population is higher. And again, think of regional rather than just the city of Glendale. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Rick Barnes, that'll be our last speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Potem, Weaver, Councilman Friedman, and Mr. Jayman, and staff. My name is Rick Barnes. Reason I'm here tonight is, I have one thing, is that for 15 years, I've been working with the police department, not as a police officer, but a community activist with the police department. And in the recent few months, I got to tell you that, well, for 13 years, I've been fighting with the Sheriff's Department to be helpful in our north area. In the last few months, I've come up with what occurred to be some problems, and the Glendale Police Department takes ownership of our community. And I don't care what anybody can say, these guys work really, really hard. I wish we had more police officers to help them out. But at this moment, some of the things that I've seen over the 15 years, I'm proud. And I got to tell you that I hope more of our citizens will come up and say hello to them, meet them. The other morning, I was at a coffee shop at 7:00 in the morning. The officers, motor officers were there, getting ready to go over to the Oktoberfest, and the people were just coming up and talking to them. And that's part of the officers. A lot of people see them a different way. I see them with the fact that when we need them, and I had family and clients and friends that needed them, and they were there when the sheriff wouldn't show up. And it helped our community. It strengthens our community. And I co-chaired the G-PAC meetings, which is the Glendale Police Advisory Council. They presented this to the seven members of the council. We also presented to the C, or they presented this package to the C-PAC, where there was 25 community leaders that were at that meeting. And all of us endorsed this wholeheartedly as a way to help police and our community at this point in time. So I'm hoping that you guys will enjoy and pass this presentation that they are presenting tonight. Thank you so much.
I send my cards. Colleagues, Mr. Friedman?
Before I moved to Glendale, I lived in Los Angeles, and there was one time where I called the police, because there were two men in a van sitting in front of my car when I got home at midnight, and they never came. And in Glendale, the few times that I've had to call the police because of quality-of-life crimes in my dark cul-de-sac, they always came right away, took it very seriously, were very professional, courteous to the people that they were interacting with, very responsive. And even though it was not a major crime, I think kids smoking pot or drinking on the block, they took it really seriously and urged us to keep calling when that kind of thing happened. And that's one of the reasons that I love living in Glendale. And I would not want to go to a system where we were using county police or sharing our police officers with a lot of other cities. I like this approach because it's even more of what was good about the Glendale model to begin with, which is the police knowing the community, knowing the residents, and this will only increase that. And I also look forward to the day where the budget allows us to beef up the department to where they don't have to work quite so hard individually. But I want to thank them all for what they do for the community, for the service they do. I think this is going to be a great model, and something that the community will notice in a good way. So thank you all, and I look forward to seeing this in action.
Mr. Grimes?
Well, I, if we could, can we pull up the, or, I don't know if we have the map up there, but just so that the public also understands, some of the approximate boundaries on this map, not boundaries, but delineations between the districts. Can you identify some of them?
Some, what? East, west, north, south?
Certainly, the, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that the PowerPoint map really lays it out, but maybe I could. One of the natural boundaries for the Southern Command, and I hope I'm answering your question, is the 134 freeway. The east and west dividers between these two commands is really primarily Brand Boulevard. And for our North Command, and that was where we, it got a little bit problematic in terms of trying, because our crime analysis group was trying to use census tracts up there. I know we had a lot of discussion about population and are we balancing? And the census tracts here initially cut the boundaries, I'll use my glasses, excuse me, right around, just north of the Spar Heights area. And just a little background, last night at the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council, one of the concerns was that the Montecito area, and one of the residents there made a very compelling case for why we should incorporate that into the Northern Command, the fact that they've been working closely with Matt Zakarian previously, and that seemed to be very important to him. And in looking at that, bringing that back to date, that really started to make sense. And one of the reasons, as I said, the boundaries may be a little bit flexible here is because we actually cut a census tract in order to get this Spar Heights, Montecito area incorporated into the North Command. And we may even take that further here by extending that down to Fern Lane, and possibly even incorporating the areas around Country Club here. But what I'd like to do is, I'd like to take it back to our leadership team and that group of individuals that have worked so hard to put this together and get their feedback and their feelings on that. So some of this is still a little bit in flux. Did that answer your question?
It did. I think one of the questions that was bound to come forward was, it's nice to talk about four districts. What are they? Other than you look at it on a map, but that's sometimes, well, this map, for example, that we're looking at, has no street names or any of that. And so I know that question's going to come up, and I appreciate the comment that was made about trying to leave neighborhoods intact rather than just looking at statistical data. So I appreciate that, and I thank you for identifying those. I would, though, like to know, there is kind of a, what part of the orange section that is sort of a finger that rises up into the middle of the, what are you calling, the northern district? What is that area?
That's the...
I mean, what, what streets would we find in that area? What residential?
That is the area around Country Club, surrounding the west side of the golf course. That's a unique neighborhood that we tried to keep intact. And again, the challenge was, trying to keep defined neighborhoods intact as much as possible, so they keep their identity and uniqueness in terms of policing and public safety needs. And if I might comment, the public's comments about the density of the South Command is very well taken. I just want to point out to council is that the proposed downtown area that will be the fifth command brings with it a very robust downtown policing unit that's available in that area. Concurrently, we are in the process of working on developing a business improvement district that will have a very, hopefully, a very effective, clean and safe component that will augment the policing of that fifth area. So it will lessen the burden in the South Command considerably when that's implemented.
Mr. Starbird?
Mr. Weaver, chief, there's an implication from some of the comments here this evening that because we have four areas, there's sort of an equal distribution of resources regardless of need. And it seems to me this philosophy is really about how you manage resources, not necessarily saying that the resources are always going to be equally distributed. Can you comment on that a bit?
Absolutely. And the essence of the program is, number one, to identify issues and be responsive. But in order to do that, there's got to be a sharing of resources between all four areas and eventually the fifth area as well. And even though we're area-basing the command, much of our supporting resources within the agency are still going to be centralized. So whether it be traffic, or investigative services, or vice enforcement, or gang enforcement, whatever the need may be, the area commander's going to have to work together to share those resources and apply them to the issues. But rest assured that it does not isolate those areas in and unto themselves where there won't be cooperation and sharing of resources to address problems throughout the city.
So resources will really be moved based on need, and that brings me to a second point. Part of this plan that has enthused me has been the chief's commitment to make our information system more robust, to really begin to gather and utilize the data that we gather. We gather a tremendous amount of data, but actually beginning to utilize that to determine how to best deploy our limited resources. And there's an example of how I think even in the early stages, that has begun to pay off. If the chief can just take a very brief moment and explain a recent incident.
I certainly can. Recently, in fact, I think it was Lieutenant Susan Hain was monitoring activity in her pending area up in the West Command, and we had noticed over a weekend a series of auto burglaries that were occurring in the early morning hours up in the residential areas. And the crime analyst was tracking this information, got it in a timely fashion to the area commander, who was then able to kind of change the deployment of resources, and typically rather, you know, we deploy most of our resources in marked police units. Well, in this case, a plane unit was deployed in the expected area, targeted area of where these crimes we thought might occur. And sure enough, about 3:00 in the morning, a suspicious vehicle was spotted. They attempted to stop it. It went into a vehicle pursuit that terminated in the city of Los Angeles, and ultimately the suspects were taken into custody. They were on parole. They were in possession of methamphetamine, and also in possession of burglary tools, and were certainly in the process of getting ready to commit some burglaries in that area. And that is just a very simple way of how timely information, getting to a person that has a specific responsibility for that area, can make something happen to avert that crime. And that's what we hope to magnify many times over throughout the city and all the areas. But you can't do it, as Mr. Starbird indicated, you cannot do it unless you have robust information systems that keep you pointed in the right direction.
I think it's going to work. It's new, folks. It's a new system. There are going to be kinks to work out. Don't expect this system to work like they've been doing it for 10 years. I mean, you've been trying it out, whatever, but still, there's going to be adjustments to be made. You know, and just look at the map. The south section is the smallest, but it's all flat land. The orange, you're dealing with the mountains. You're covering the area. Same with the north and the east. It's flat and hillside, so your deployment strategies have to be different.
Absolutely.
Down in South Glendale. So please know what they're doing, just let them do it. That's my motto.
And one point I might add about the boundaries, they will be on the website, so very shortly, if the public is concerned and wants to get greater information about the specific details and where, what area they reside in, that'll be available very shortly.
Okay. Now, there's a motion to note and file, as we want to tell them to change things.
I'm happy to, to move, what is it? Excuse me, 8B1.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Your call, please.
Councilmember Strayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Jarian? Mayor Quintero? Mayor Potem Weaver?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck. Our prayers are with you. Call us next, please.
Ed H. C. is acting Director of Community Development and Housing, Director of Information Services, Director of Planning, Fire Chief, Director of Public Works, regarding recommendation for the purchase of consultation service for the City Services Interface CSI project. Ed C. one is motion approving a change order with EdgeSoft Inc., ESI, in the amount of $640,860 for software customization, data conversion, and migration implementation services for City Services Interface Project for a total contract price of $2,148,810. Ed C. two is a resolution appropriating $60,000.
Mr. Drayman?
Okay. Mr. Mayor Potem Weaver, I would, I don't know how lengthy the, or extensive the presentation is, but I'm prepared to make a motion when you are ready to entertain one.
Okay. And I assume you're ready to second it, Mr. Friedman? But I'd like to know, is it a brief presentation? When you've got a whole cadre of...
We can certainly make it brief. Let me ask Mr. Fraga, Director of Information Services, to give you a brief overview.
Mayor Potem Weaver, members of the council. My name is Ed Fraga. I'm the new Information Services Director for the city. The item before you is to extend a contract with a company called EdgeSoft, and this is a company that provides us with permit and licensing software. We have been in the process of implementing this software, and this, the request here is for an extension to complete some of the work already done, and to ensure that we get the building department completely into this system. The importance of that is to have all of these various sections, which includes what was currently called Neighborhood Services, and Building and Safety, and Planning, and then, of course, Fire, get all of those working within the same system. So that's what we're trying to achieve, and this is consistent with the council's direction to move many of those sections into a single department.
Thank you. Any other questions? Other questions, sir? Friedman, you wanted to make a motion?
If we're prepared for that, yes. Then I would, as a matter of fact, may I ask, this is eight, one and two, can they be, I assume they can be taken together. And I will move eight, C1 and 2.
Second.
Your call, please.
Councilmember Straman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Angarian. Mayor Quintero. Mayor Protem Weaver.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good evening. What is next, please?
8D, City Manager, regarding appeal, and this is actually the item that was taken off, but I will just read it so the audience knows. It was appeal of special event permit denial for Montrose Rodrigo City Chamber of Commerce, Second Annual Fall Arts Festival, which was removed. So, that brings us back to oral communications, item six. Discussion is limited. Item is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. And the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and report.
Mr. Mayor, in case somebody came in late, I might repeat, 8D was removed because the Montrose Rodrigo Chamber of Commerce withdrew its appeal. Thank you, Mr. Starbird.
And for the first time in my 13 years on the council, there were more announcement cards than there were oral speaking cards. First, tonight I'm running the meeting. Something new. Well, let's get on. Herbert Milano. I think he's gone.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am Mohammed Tagi Elmi from Iran Tehran. I am a citizen. I am living over 10 years for Galandel City. Past 22 September, I visiting meeting town council city of Galandel 6 p.m. About apply Section 8 House from housing community service department of Galandel City. Now, I wait your decision and answer. What can you do to me? Please reply to me. Thank you very much, your seriously Mohammed Tagi Elmi, 323 North Chaves Drive Apartment F, Galandel, California. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think you were here last week and staff is aware.
And I can make a brief comment at the end of oral communication.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, Margaret Hammond, followed by Bill Weisman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the council, staff and probably the TV audience. My name is Margaret Hammond and I have been a citizen of Glendale, resident of Glendale for 50 years and have lived on Adams Hill that whole time. One of the veins of my life and affecting quality of life in my area happens to be people who dump their bulky trash. On every corner practically, there are times that you go up and down and there are all these couches, dressers, anything, toilets. One of them, somebody turned around and put a plant in it because it sat there for a couple of weeks. And what I'm seeing is it's not, it's not very good for the neighborhood. And people wonder why the neighborhood, the south of Glendale, gets a bad name. I understand other areas have a problem also with this. I have talked about it before. Now, as I'm sure you're all aware, I am on the Glendale Clean and Beautiful Committee. And one of our things in life has been in the past, in our lives, has been graffiti, which has been brought down considerably, has been grocery carts that have littered the city. And we, an ordinance, the city council in their wisdom passed that ordinance to have that problem taken care of. And as I said, we got an award for that from other cities and a lot of conversation from Keep America Beautiful. The cigarette butt program. And of course, our smoking program that we got, Glendale, a breath of fresh air, that we got an award for. We've really taken care of a lot of problems and our group, the group of the Clean and Beautiful, the volunteers on there, and Neighborhood Services and working with other city departments. Not just, you know, I mean, I'm not saying that we don't get help from the others, we do, departments. But it takes the public, the public, to make this effective. And I did appeal to the homeowners groups last night that maybe they could put notices in their newsletters. Unfortunately, south of Glendale, we have one homeowners group, Adams Hill. And that is the largest population and where there seems to be the most trash left on corners and dumped everywhere. I do wish that people would consider what it does to the reputation of their neighborhood. They have junk trashed, left down, all over the place. Come out of their house and throw it in the right of way and then the pile gets bigger and bigger because people add to it. And it's really sad that they don't have more pride in their area. I do hope that maybe all they have to do, the most aggravating thing is, the city has a solution to the problem. All you have to do is pick up the phone and phone 818-548-3916. And they come within, I've had them come within 15 to 20 minutes and pick, they know me so well, as I say, they ask after my grandson when I call them up. They don't even ask my name because it just is horrible to have this horrible mess on the streets, trash all over the place, couches. I mean, I've tried leaving them. I left one for three weeks in front of an apartment house on Boynton, just to see how long it would sit there. And they say, oh, well, tenants, they believe in being part of the community and so forth. If they do, why don't they call and have the, just do that phone number, 548-3916. And everybody in the city should do it. If you see piles of junk aligned the right of way, just, you know, take down the address. Doesn't matter if it's in your neighborhood or whose neighborhood. I do it if I see junk being left around for a long time. So, please, in order to improve the quality of life of our city, along with all the other things that we've accomplished, please just call the bulky pickup. And I know those guys will be happy to come and pick up your stuff. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem Weaver, council members, city staff and the public. My name is Bill Weisman from far north Glendale. And I wanted to come down tonight to follow up again with what the city is doing regarding flood preparation in north Glendale. Before I get started on that, I also wanted to mention really quickly that there was a Coffee with the Cops event weekend before last at the Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf in Montrose. And we did get to meet our Glendale police officers, Matt Zakarian and Lieutenant Grimes, who's going to be responsible for our area, and also Captain Silver Spar from the Lock Resona Sheriff's Office and CHP representatives were there as well. So, I just wanted to mention real quick, we have good cooperation, communication and mutual aid up in our area. In regards to flood preparations in Glendale, there was a sandbag fill in Dunsmore Park on Saturday, which was a very successful event. There were probably, maybe not all there at the same time, but there were at least 50 people there. A lot of parents brought their kids. There were Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, lots of community members. And we went through 3,000 pounds of sand in an hour and a half and got it all sandbagged. And so, for the folks that need sandbags, and some people did come by and pick them up on Saturday, they are in the lower part of the parking lot in Dunsmore Park, sitting on pallets, ready to go. And I think we probably may have another session to fill up more sandbags if we need. Also wanted to mention that any of the residents of far north Glendale who want to have, get more information and discussion about the flood preparations, they're invited to the Crescent Valley Community Association meeting, which is going to be Wednesday, October 28th, at 7:00 p.m. in the Dunsmore Park Community Room. Now, I brought something with me tonight for show and tell and it's actually part of a report that I believe was just released today by the U.S. Geological Survey. And it is part, it is an emergency assessment of post-fire debris flow hazards for the 2009 station fire in the San Gabriel Mountains. And I know that city staff is already aware of what's in this document because I read it in the news press, so it's got to be true. And one of the, it's a 28-page document and it has a lot of technical information on how you go about predicting debris flow hazards. But one of the things I wanted to bring down to show you is this map, which is sort of, this map is not even a worst-case scenario, but it shows possible paths of debris and mud flows as a result of what they call a two-year recurrent storm lasting for 12 hours. So, the probability of a debris flow happening with that storm is somewhere north of 80%, which is a pretty high probability. So, I'm very glad to see that the city is taking this seriously and that they're being very proactive in their preparations. And one of the things I wanted to mention, it's very unusual looking at this map because it reminded me of another map in the Images of America Lock Crescent book by my friends, Mike Lawler and Robert Newcomb. There's another map in here, how the floodwaters came during the flood of 1934. And not surprisingly, the tracks that the debris and water follows are very similar to what's been predicted by USGS. Water flows downhill. It's going to flow downhill through the same channels, you know, in 2009 that it flowed through in 1934. There haven't been that many major changes in the topography. And again, it's, people need to realize, and not even necessarily this year, but next year and the year after, this is something that we cannot afford to ignore. And wanted to mention, just in summing up, that I had lunch today with some friends of ours over in Sunland Tahunga. And we had a lot of discussion on what our various cities and public agencies were doing in terms of flood preparation. And I have to say that the city of LA did not get very high marks. LA County and the city of Glendale, the consensus was, seemed to definitely have their act together in terms of flood preparation. And for that, I wanted to thank you. And just wanted to mention one little piece of history, since I'm getting my sum-up light on here. And that was that in the 1920s, the LA County Flood Control Engineers proposed construction of debris basins. There was a ballot measure in 1926, which was defeated, to build debris basins. And after the floods in 1934, the chief county flood control engineer urged the Board of Supervisors to construct these debris basins. And that's how they got where they are now. So, again, wanted to say thanks very much for the preparation and the proactive approach from the city.
And back in the 60s, I did some of the surveys to create the debris basins with the Corps of Engineers.
That's great. Thank you.
Got a lot of poison oak, I'll tell you. Okay, I have no more cars, but I see Mr. Milano's back. I called your name, you were gone. You're back.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Weaver, members of the city council, city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. First of all, I want to give the opinion that the idea of having that presentation at 5:30 for people who want to present their issues or their announcements is an excellent one. What I want to do here is bring you some information concerning what other cities are doing with regard to the balanced scorecard. If you were to go into Google and type in balanced scorecard in quotes and then type in anything else after that, for example, public works in quotes, you actually will see tens of thousands of hits now as this system is being used throughout the world. Now, I'm going to be going over to, I think, page 17, just to show you an example of what I'm talking about here with this. One of the things that you see is, when we get to the... Here, for example, is performance results by key area, in this case, transportation. And you have some, it says traffic flow and congestion percentage, satisfactors or unsatisfactory measures. These performance results do use surveys whenever there is no tangible hard data, but the preference is to use hard data. So, this, every year, they give a target with regard to improvement of traffic flow. In this case, they have a 2008 target of 35%. They look at the actual with regard to the improvement that they want to make. Now, every department of the city will have, for example, for mass transit efforts, they have their ridership objectives with regard to, they happened to be at 78 in 2007, they want to go to 80 for the following year. So, department by department, you find tangible hard objectives. Let's say this is public safety. Here's, for example, violent crime rate per thousand. And in 2007, they were at 3.05. Here, they're trying to lower the target now to 3. This is for managing resources, developing employees, promote a vibrant downtown area, the economic sustainability. As you can see, that there are various different measures and the measures are separated by groups. For example, this is the customer perspective, the operational perspective, the financial perspective. So, generally, there are four perspectives that you look at when you're basically creating a strategic plan. There are two internal perspectives and two outside perspectives. But the customer perspective, meaning the residential or the residents or the individuals that you serve, your customer, is, and they call them customers, to create this whole idea that the taxpayer and the resident is a customer of the city government. There's a percentage of respondents satisfied or very satisfied with the city's effort to involve the public in financial decisions. Here it is, 45. The target is 50. So, now, if we were to compare, for example, the city of Glendale and the public's involvement in financial decisions, we know that during the budget study sessions, very few people attend. There really is very little effort in trying to reach out to the general public and involvement with regard to what is the future of Glendale with regard to its financial status. There's also very little activity in Glendale with regard to the quarterly meetings of the Audit Committee, for example. You know, when I went there the first time, it had been like four years before anyone had actually gone out there. And I think that the Audit Committee, as an example, should be a monthly type committee that is presented to the general public and it should be televised to get the people and the residents involved with regard to the state of the finances of the city. This is public services. And you will find measures with regard to diversity, of course. Here you have an activity coming up with regard to Unity Fest. And when you're trying to find diversity within the city, you figure out what is the number of employees within the fire department who speak Armenian and who are able to attend to emergencies that deal with non-English speaking part of the community. There could be measures and my hope is that as the city departments become more exposed to strategic planning, that you seriously take a look at the balanced scorecard so that it becomes ingrained into the daily activities and monthly reporting that these departments have. Thank you very much.
I think I have no more cars or communications closed. Colleagues... colleagues, or Mr. Herbert, have any comments, or are we done?
Mr. Weaver, I did mention we'd respond quickly, at least a comment on Mr. Elmi and his concerns. They do have to do with Section 8 housing voucher. He has met with various staff members on numerous occasion. His situation is rather unique, but it does involve he and his wife having previously been eligible for a housing voucher. They are no longer together, and so she has the voucher, and his desire is that he receive one as well. HUD really doesn't address that situation, and so we're not able to give him one directly, but staff continues to work with him. That's the nature of his situation. I think Margaret did mention in her comments about large item pickup that it is free, and I want to emphasize that, it's free. All people have to do is call and make an arrangement for items to be picked up. I think people, particularly those living in apartments when they move, still feel that there's probably a charge, so we find large items left on the curb. It is free. All they have to do is call and arrange for pickup, and we're happy to do that. Huh, Steve?
Thank you. Ms. Friedman?
I have a question, you know, something I've wondered with the large item pickup. When they pick something up that's usable or donateable, do they destroy it, or do they ever consider donating that to Goodwill, or is that just too difficult?
Dave, Mayor Protem...
I can tell by the...
Ms. Friedman, you run into, the Health Department considers it trash collection, so you're not able to reclaim it really once it goes in the truck. However, let me say for the record, we try to at least recycle almost everything we pick up. So you will see us in neighborhoods sometimes picking up white goods and appliances in a flatbed truck because we don't crush them. Law says those that have HF season in, we can't crush those, but we take those to a metal recycler. Computers, e-waste, again, there's laws that we can't break those or crush those. We take those and recycle those to a specific e-waste recycler. Furniture, which is mostly what we get, couches, tables, bookshelves, we take those to another, yet another facility where we recycle those. Those are composted into various, either sawdust for reuse, they take the metal springs out of couches, they take the material and the filling out of those and recycle all those. So virtually everything that we pick up in our operation, in the bulky item operation, we recycle. So it is, we are trying to do what we can with it. It is difficult for us to try to donate that or reuse that in another application, but we are recycling.
Good to know. And I just wanted to very quickly respond to Mr. Milano. That balanced scorecard is very interesting, and I'm going to look into that. I've never actually seen one before presented, so I appreciate you bringing that to us. I just wanted to say about the budget study session, when I've gone to League of City events, I've talked to a lot of council members from a lot of different cities, and from what I've seen, that workshop that we did where we went through each department and sort of went programmatically through how the budget was spent and how their budget for each department is spent and how it links up to different programs, was by far the most intense and in-depth presentation, or exercise, I guess, that I've heard from any other council member. Most of them responded that they had only a very perfunctory kind of overview department by department given by their cities. And several of them were sort of jealous that we had such a long and intense look into the city finances. So I think that if, you know, we tried our best to encourage the public to participate in televising that many hours of budget study session, I think was good for the community, and I hope that people did watch it, and then if they had a concern, they came in and spoke. I know that I had asked several members of the community to come forward. You know, I went to the Homeowners Coordinating Council, for instance, and said, if you're not happy with cuts in this department, you know, come and speak. So I think we've done our best to try to encourage the public to be, to participate, and just by airing that amount of television. Hopefully, if they were home watching, that was the kind of participation. So I think we've been less than secretive about how the city operates.
Okay. No other comments? Is there a motion to adjourn? Because there's no new business.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Stand adjourned at 8:20.